Go ahead and call the January council meeting order, Roca.
Peterson.
Here.
Crouppack.
Here.
Schmansky.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Coon.
Here.
First on the agenda is approval of last month's minutes.
I move it.
Sorry.
Motion second to approve the December council minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Next is the Treasury report.
So.
Second.
Motion second to approve the Treasury report, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Citizens forum, you guys will, when we get to the committee report, okay? First up is planning commission. We have a planning commission meeting on December 22nd, could have a motion second that these minutes be approved as written.
Second.
I move it, excuse me.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes is written, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa Common Council, a planning commission meeting was held on Monday, December 22nd, 2014, at 4:30 PM in the Nacusa Council chambers. Members present were Allen Marco, Mayor, Chairperson, Brad Hamilton, Secretary, Jarrod Portis, August Wyack, Bill Caverly, DPW, Larry Crouppack, Brad Hamilton, John Kukoka. Also in attendance was Melvin Knetzki. Number one, recommend conditional use permit for Melvin Knetzki to operate business out of his home at 1012 West Forest Street.
I move it up in motion second.
Motion second to adopt item number one of the planning commission, Roca.
What is the nature of the business? How much of the money?
He, he's, he, he has kind of like a consultant business, like you can, let's say if you wanted to go out and buy, let's say like maybe a handgun, there's paperwork involved, or like clips for a semi-automatic rifle, you know, he can do the paperwork and stuff and you can kind of order stuff through him and then, and then, and get the, and get the items that way.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Basically, he has a firearms license, he's able to get all this stuff.
Not, not a strip company.
Don't, don't, he don't have no firearms in the house at all, it's just a, just a business he runs through buying stuff with people.
And there was alcohol, was it the ATF out of Milwaukee called? And he had, you know, and, and one of their reps or agents or whatever, his handle was, was, you know, kind of making sure that everything was kosher on this end of it, so, and I told him that, you know, about the zoning and stuff and that, so, so that's one issue we had to have taken care of, so. Peterson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yeah.
Webb?
Yes.
Crouppack?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yeah.
Coon?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Next is Ways and Means.
Ways and Means had one meeting to report, I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Motion then a second to accept the minutes as written of the Ways and Means meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa Common Council, a Ways and Means meeting was held on Tuesday, January 13th, 2015, at 6:15 PM in the Nacusa Council chambers. Members present were Garrett Coon, Chairperson, Terry Schmansky, Secretary, Bob Schultz, Emmett Peterson. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Brad Hamilton, Larry Crouppack, and August Wyack. Number one, we audited the bills. Number two, recommend application for operator's license to James Porter for candy bar, for Shane Walker for Jacobi Open, and Brandon Jacobi for the Jacobi Open. Number three, recommend application for temporary Class B retailer's license to Jacobi Custom Q's for the Jacobi Open on January 15th through 18th, 2015. Number four, we discussed ASCAP billing. Number five, recommend accepting offer from Baltus Oil on fuel purchased. Number six, recommend letter of engagement on retaining elders incorporated pending clarification on fees. Number seven, recommend safety awards payout as in the past. Recommend for adoption items two, three, five, six, and seven.
Have you heard anything on, have you had any discussion on that, or is, on the, the other letter? As far as the costs involved? There, um. Is it ones that we only pay if we use it? No, well, yeah, I think you got to file it every year, I think it's probably about, it's probably around a grand, because they did it this year. Okay. And we did pay it, so it's around, I think it was like about 1,100 bucks, maybe it was in a, maybe, I don't know if we got a minute, we could look in the, yeah, see, that's, that's kind of the fee schedule in there. And they, they did file this year and then they put a bill in, but they kind of want to have a, and I just, I don't know if that was in the, this bill list or not, I mean.
Well, we approved it, so it just, yeah, we just wanted to know if there was, it said 2,800 bucks for one to three and all this other stuff, what that all was. So as long as you're, as sustained as we did.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. At some point. Clarification.
So, yeah. As long as you're, you're fine with it now.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they've done good work for us and it's kind of a, well, you know, if you want to see it, I mean, it's, it's on my, you, every one of you's got a copy of it, but if you, maybe it's in your records or something, but I do have it in my period binder, what it looks like, what it's basically listing all the, the long-term debt and then listing all that stuff and, and there's other, you know, stuff in there, but, um, just a thing that the SEC reports. That, that was just our concern as far as what that, what the, the fees for, were for, so. Okay. Everybody's fine with it, then we need any more clarification or?
No.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Roca, all to adopt items two, three, five, six, and seven. Wyack?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Crouppack?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Next is Public Works.
We want to review the whole thing and then attack that in one.
Yeah.
I'll be on the other side.
Yeah, we'll do that first.
Public Works has one meeting to report on, I move to have the minutes accepted as read.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the Public Works minutes as read, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
Okay, to the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa Common Council, Public Works meeting was held on Tuesday, January 6th, 2015, at 9:30 AM in the Nacusa Council chambers. Members present were Larry Crouppack, Garrett Coon, Robert Schultz, and August Wyack. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, William Caverly from the DPW, Brad Hamilton, Todd Trader from MSA, Terry Fancher, and Dave Katnich. Item one, recommend request subway to allow customer pickups only in the back alley window. Orders will not be taken at the window, city will not restrict access to the alley. Item two, discuss water updates. Item three, discuss waste water treatment plan updates. Item four, discuss the MSA regular updates. Item five, discuss 2015 non-TID related service contract with MSA. Item six, discuss 2015 TID related service contract with NSA. Item seven, discuss 2015 GIS hosting contract with MSA. Item eight, recommend Terry Fancher and Jeff McDonald to the Conex Heavy Equipment Show on January 28th, 2015. We do have people in, you.
Yeah, why don't we do a recommendation option on number eight first, and then we'll go back to.
Okay. We'll hold out item one for a separate board. Item eight, I moved, I recommend to accept it.
There's a motion second on floor to approve item number eight of the Public Works report, Roca. Schultz?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Crouppack?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
And number one, Amy, Dave, Water Bowl.
Um, I'm Amy, obviously, I think everybody knows who we are, Steve Katnall, we live at the property that will be negatively affected by the subway pickup window. Um, I wrote a letter, I didn't mail it because I was afraid I wouldn't get here in time if I mailed it, and I wanted to make sure it got here. I only have the one copy, I'll read it and then I'll give it to the mayor. Um, so the mayor, common council, and, or council members, and city of Nacusa. We respectfully request that the city of Nacusa exercise its regulatory control and pass an ordinance prohibiting the parking and/or stopping vehicles in the alley along subway between Prospect Avenue and Vilas Avenue. And of course, we signed it. We would ask that if you choose not to restrict access to the alley right now, that you would at least not make any assurances to subway, because if they have the right to use the alley for their personal business, then we should have the right to come back later if there's issues. So, um, we also want to point out, there is a no parking at any time sign in the alley already. That was, the city put up several years ago. Um, Dave had come to a meeting before, was having issues with people blocking him in parking there, and the city chose at that time to put that no parking sign up. So I don't know if you're allowing subway to use the alley by not restricting the alley, does that make that no parking sign null and void? Does it mean that, you know, before you were going to help, but now you're not? I just wanted to point out, you know, if I was to bring my van and come to your house, park at the end of your driveway on the street and block your driveway, and you couldn't get out if you needed to get out, or you couldn't come home in if you needed to come home, you know, how would you like that? If it's maybe four or five minutes that I'm sitting there, maybe it's 15 minutes, maybe it's longer. I don't think anybody here would want that at their property. I don't think anyone would just want to deal with it, maybe you'd call the police if someone's sitting there blocking you in. Even one car at that pickup window blocked Dave from getting out. I might be able to get out if there's one car, but if there's two, I absolutely can't. And even Angie said she wouldn't want it if it was her property, if it was her house that was being affected. So even two cars, you know, there's potential for a lot longer line if there's people backed up at busy times wanting to pick up sandwiches. They started out saying it was just going to be pickup, it had to be pre-ordered, and then at the committee meeting, they said, well, you know, we might have to take money and exchange money. So how long before it becomes a full drive-through? And, you know, McDonald's, when they started out, it was just going to be, you know, a limited menu, and then it turned into a full menu. So, you know, what if they sell Subway, Taco Bell comes in, and then what do you do about the pickup window? Besides just the fact that we would be unfairly blocked in or out, I think it also creates a safety hazard. We have garages on each side of our parking area, I don't know if anyone went down there and checked it out, but it's very difficult already for us to see to back out. There's hardly any traffic, you know, a few people that live right there maybe use the alley. Now you're going to have cars pulling in all the time to pick up their sandwiches, so there's bound to be accidents. I don't feel that subway needs this pickup window for their business, but if they do need it, we did come up with an idea for them to put their window in on the side where their door is right now. It would restrict their parking, but it wouldn't take away our parking, which seems like a fair answer. I did look up some city ordinances, and there are some that I do think apply. So, from chapter eight of the Public Works, subsection 8.06, under obstructions and encroachments. Number one, no person shall encroach upon or in any way obstruct or encumber any street, alley, sidewalk, public grounds, or land dedicated to public use, or any part thereof, or permit such encroachment or encumbrance to be placed or remain on any public way adjoining the premises of which he is the owner or the occupant. So to me, that in itself says, they shouldn't be allowed to obstruct the alley with cars picking up sandwiches. Chapter 10, under public nuisances, 10.01, prohibited acts. No person shall erect, contrive, cause, contain, continue, maintain, or permit to exist any public nuisance within the city. And then under section 10.02, the definition of a public nuisance is, a thing, act, occupation, condition, or use of property which shall continue for such length of time as to, one, substantially annoy, injure, or endanger the comfort, health, repose, or safety of the public; two, in any way render the public insecure in life or in the use of property; three, greatly offend the public morals or decency; four, unlawfully and substantially interfere with, obstruct, or tend to obstruct or render dangerous for passage any street, alley, highway, navigable body of water, or other public way, or the use of public property. To me, we are the public, we're the citizens of the city, so blocking us into our art of our parking area, limiting their access to our home, that will substantially annoy us, endangers our comfort, health, and safety, and does make us insecure in the use of our property. It also obstructs the alley, renders the alley dangerous for passage. Um, it's already caused a nuisance to us. I mean, neither one of us is sleeping, we're both having, you know, pain and medical issues from the stress, and it hasn't even happened yet. Um, under chapter 17 in the zoning code, 17.11, the definition of an alley is, a special public right-of-way affording only secondary access to abutting properties. There's nothing in there that allows a business to use an alley to function for their business. And then under chapter one, the Code of Ethics under General Government, talking about the responsibility of public office. Public officials and employees are agents of the public, of public purpose and hold the office for the benefit of the public. They are to discharge faithfully the duties of their office regardless of personal considerations, recognizing that the public interest must be their prime concern. Again, I think we're the public, we're the citizens, so we should be the prime concern before the business owner should be the prime concern. Under fair and equal treatment, under obligations to citizens, it says, no official or employee shall grant any special consideration, treatment, or advantage to any citizen beyond that which is available to every other citizen. So if every citizen in town is being allowed unrestricted access to their driveways and parking areas, I think we should be given the same unrestricted access. And I also think, to me, that says, if you're going to allow subway to use the alley as part of their business, then you have to allow every other business in the city to do the same thing. So if someone else wants to decide to start selling food out their back alley, you have to allow that too. So I, in my opinion, I think subway is being unfair to us, they know it's going to have negative impact on us, and they're going to want to do this anyway. So then I think it's the job of the city to protect us. I think those ordinances I read basically say the same thing. And I think that, um, I would appreciate it if you guys would take our concerns into consideration and not just say we're supposed to deal with it. I think, like I said before, if this affected your driveway or your access to your residents, how would you vote? Would you restrict access to that alley if it affected you personally? You know, and if you're not, if you don't want to do that, then I'm just asking at least don't assure them that you won't in the future. So, um, please do the same for us that you would do if it was for yourself. Thank you.
Dave, any additions?
I really don't have anything else to say to it, I mean, I've said it the first council meeting and at, and at the committee meeting. I think Amy has spoken very well, and to the point that we're, what we believe in, so, but thank you.
Discussion on the floor. I know Bob, you expressed your.
I did.
Concerns to everybody?
I did. I think it's a can of worms, and I think it's good to deny it.
I agree with Bob. I don't know what to, can you can we, we deny it or not?
Can you what?
Can you we, we deny them, putting that window in? I've been looking at protective machinery too, and I'm not, there's, you know, it's.
I, uh, the way I framed up my memo is that I think they can do with their building what they want. They can put the, they can put the window there, but then, um, first of all, have you, did you see, did you see my memo? That if, um, that they do it at their peril, that, um, they put the window there, altering their building. Uh, you know, they haven't created an encumbrance by changing the door. But then they find out after the fact that you put in a no-stopping-in-alley, um, no-parking-in-alley, uh, and you enforce it. The, the issue, I think, I don't know if I had a sentence in my memo, as to, do you, if they do with their building what they want to do, and then you don't like it, and so, um, you put in some restrictions on that alley, and you instruct the police department to kind of police that area at what you expect to visit times, four, five, six o'clock at night, and enforce the, the, um, the restrictions. So I think the, two questions, saying the same thing. Can they, can they alter their building? Yes. Do you have full right to regulate that alley? Yes. It's the city of Nacusa alley.
But, but that is the only thing we can regulate, is the alley. We can't do anything about them putting that door in. And I, I hope you understand the predicament that that, I think, puts us in with, with anybody, whether it's a landowner, business owner, whatever. And, and believe me, I mean, they put the pickup window in, I can't say I ever used it. I like going in and just pick my sandwich up and I walk out. But, um, whether we'll even get any use, I don't know. But for us to put up rules like that inside the alley to stop something like that, to me, for lack of a better word, is dirty politics. You know what I'm saying?
Not really. Because there's already no parking sign there.
On, on that issue of no parking, I, I went through the alley after the last common council meeting, of both ways, about three different times, and, so it was night, so I didn't see the no parking, but as I was writing it, I, I think the way I, I even had a no parking, no stopping, yeah, I said that any parking slash stopping in the alley, you know, what's, I don't know what the difference is between a park and a stop. I did not go to the, uh, to the ordinance book to look up our definition of alley, I went, actually, I went to Black's Law Dictionary and then some case law for definition of alley. And the, our ordinance is pretty close to the Black's Law Dictionary definition, it's a, that dictionary's definition was a little broader in that it, it allows access to, into property, and that's historically what an alley is. And the other thing I did not do, it was night, I did not circle around to the front of your yard. So I don't know why your garage was built adjacent to an alley, which is different for a lot of the residents of, of Nacusa who access their driveway and garage off of a street.
And I would think.
I don't, I don't know how much, I don't know how much space there is on the front.
There's not much.
Curved line.
Yeah, there's not even enough room that we could park, you know.
We, we've tried looking at different options, you know, you know, maybe they can provide us parking in the front, or, you know, there's no room between the road and our house to put any parking, or, you know, even if you put a driveway, say, between our house and blue house that is closer to the river, well, there isn't enough, even for a driveway to go between, you know, my, my house, you know, I mean, we, we've tried working with them and trying to come up with different ideas. What is, your front door fronts on what street?
Second.
And if you're driving your car on second, and is there enough room to create a driveway to, um, have a driveway and garage with an entrance off second?
No.
Okay, so that, which is fine, I didn't know that fact, but that is then why, um, the original builder of that property, probably 30, 40, 50, 60 years ago, put the garage in the backyard with access to the garage and the drive area off of the alley. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
That's very common in many municipalities.
Howling hearing.
I mean, the width of our property is basically from my white garage, backside, to the blue garage towards the river, you know, so it's a pretty narrow lot, so like I said, it's just.
66 foot.
66 foot.
Well, and ultimately, I think this goes back to, uh, Public Works, but I, the way I was framing up the memo, if everyone understands this, I was framing up the memo, is if the attitude of council is, um, we're really not going to probably pass this to begin with, then kill it now, but if your attitude is, we'll continue to encourage you to send your letter and we'll respond to the letter, uh, then keep it alive. That was, so whatever, I wasn't expecting the common council to make a decision that they get it, I was expecting the common council to indicate a consensus of, uh, we think we're going to give it to you, or it's going to be dead on arrival, once we see your letter.
But again, my point is, is, you know, like, like even the recommendation, I mean, now that I look at it, probably shouldn't be written up the way it is, the way, the way we, uh, yeah. I had Garrett write it up. It should have, recommend request for subway to allow customer pickup only in the back alley window. If they want to put a window in there, they can put a window in there and we can't stop them, so why are we making a recommendation on it?
That's what I was going to ask.
Number one.
Well, I, the.
The only other part of the recommendation is the city will not restrict access to the alley. That one's still for, that I'm still for 100% no matter what. And, uh, I, I don't believe that's the way to go at this. I heard, and again, now, this is just what I heard from an individual, that she was actually doing, you know, audits of her customers coming in, would you use a, something like this, because it's going to cost them up to $3,000 to put the window in and get everything done right. Do they want to make that investment and then not have it paid off? So she's still researching this, it's not like it's going to happen tomorrow, from what I understand. So. You know.
But then, can we at least ask you guys not, because she's asking for assurance then, that you won't restrict that alley? And I'm asking you to not give her that assurance, to say that, okay, six months from now, if we're spending 10, 15 minutes blocked in our driveway every day, we have the right to come back and say, can you restrict that?
If she's blocking a driveway, if a business is blocking anything like that, we always have, we're not getting, getting rid of our rights to, to the alley. But the only restriction that I was talking about is a one-way. I don't think that's an answer to that alley, not for you guys, not for anybody. You know, because they wanted to do it from, or, from the road, from the.
Highway.
Highway, highway west, and I, I didn't like that idea in, in the first place. Because the thing is so skinny, you got, it's a one-way, basically a one-way, or one-car alley as it is, so you're set there. I don't even know why, I, I couldn't figure out what we were doing, I don't know how we can restrict her, and we, we're not going to restrict the alley, because we've got, we've got a pallet, we've got to pick up garbage, we're going to do, you know.
Right. As far as building the window, we can't, we can't stop them from doing that. But they're not going to build a window unless they have the assurance about the alley, you know.
Well, but what we told her at, at the meeting, that basically we weren't going to restrict the alley, that if she wanted, she was going to have to put signs up directing her customers in which way would be the pickup window, which way to enter the alley. It would be up to us to direct them, the traffic into it. She was going to have to get signs for the, for the sides of the building saying, pickup window, enter other end, or whatever, however she wanted to work.
So are you saying the city can't say it's a no parking, no stopping area?
No, we can't say that. We can, we can, we can make it a one-way alley if we want it to. I'm dead set against doing that, though.
No, no.
I, I don't want to put no parking, or, well, the no parking part, okay.
Well, yeah, because there's no room to.
Right, there's no room to park.
No room for anybody.
And, uh, but as far as stopping the pickup, you know, and that's, that's a conundrum there, you know, it's just.
Well, the rest of our alleys do pick up, and we had pickups for, for years in their alleys.
Oh, downtown alleys are constantly, yeah, there's constant traffic in there, shit stopping, loading.
They don't deliver from the front side, they deliver from the alley here, so actually, they're, they're doing, that would be basically what we.
But delivery to the business, their supply is, is different than a steady stream of cars coming to pick up the sandwich.
Right, the delivery is kind of like on a, on a certain basis, time, like, I know, like subway, you know, four, five o'clock in the morning, they get the food service, the somebody's parked in the alleyway. You know, I know that that truck is going to be there at that time of the morning, you know, I'm not expecting to say, okay, 10 o'clock today, maybe 2 o'clock tomorrow.
You know, I'm not expecting to say, okay, 10 o'clock today, maybe 2 o'clock tomorrow, you know. It just, there's more of a time schedule when it's an actual delivery, it seems like. Where like, if it's a business with a pickup window, you never know when a car is going to kind of come through. You know.
Do we even, do we even need the recommendation?
I don't think we do, I really don't. We can't stop her from putting the window in.
Right.
And if she, if her traffic at that window, she uses it, does this, and her traffic at the window interferes with anything, our following snow, these guys parking, anything like that, we're going to say, guess what, you can't do that. Because we have, you know, things have to get done. It's just like blocking a street or blocking whatever. I think we just.
I'd say, I want to be fair to them, too, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
If, to make a $3,000 investment, and then six months down the road, tell me, sorry, but, you know. And that's why I'd rather see it resolved before, before that happens.
It's going to be hurt. We could, we could unrestrict it, they could give it her the blessing of the day and let it go, and it might be a flop, too. It might be the best thing since sliced bread, and it doesn't interfere with, we don't know until it actually happens. But what I would like to see.
Nobody's got the crystal ball to find out.
Right, what I would like to see is just for us to cable this, just leave it sit. And not do nothing with it.
What I was trying to create was a situation where they identify what they want to do, which they were very clear when they were here a month ago. Don't let us spend $3,000 and then find out that it was a total waste of time because you put restrictions on the alley.
Exactly.
But they, I thought, when I wrote my memo, I said, this is not a way to run, run the, you know, run the ship. They're coming to us and there's zero paper trail. So put the burden back on them, have them put it in writing exactly what they want to do. I mean, we know what they want to do. An identical. But I have no paper trail. If somebody's coming in and is doing an audit, and I have an empty file, I go, why'd you do that, common council? Let the property owner present their idea in writing and make their case as to why it is tolerable. And we're asked, you know, this, the introduction of two items that I heard tonight, I did not hear a month ago, the idea that maybe it would become a pickup. An order and pickup. And, you know, that was something that, a month ago, the discussion was, we, you might tolerate it if it's only a pickup, but you will not tolerate it if it's a order and pickup.
That's still a goal.
I also thought I heard last month, but I wasn't paying that close attention to the detail, but I thought that the order system, the order system was so automatic that it was payment by credit card, which is different than showing up, giving a $10 bill for a $5.50 sandwich, and then having to wait for $4.50 change. So, you know, you might not restrict with respect to having a no stopping or no parking ordinance, but you could say, look, we are going to do that if you go beyond the border of just handing the sandwich or giving change. And so if that's what you're going to do, just hand the sandwich, but also tolerate the situation of making change. We don't want that, and we're telling you right now. But if it's as simple as, the sandwich is ready here, the sandwich is not ready, go over and park in our parking spot. And so I wanted you to be clear to them as to, we will not impose a restriction, but this is our expectation. If you can live with our expectation, then go at it. But if you can't live with our expectation, you're at your peril in putting it in.
But if you look at it from our point, one car, two cars, three cars, just pulling up to get their sandwich, creates a problem for us.
And that's not for me to decide.
And that's why, I guess, we're asking the city to say it's a no stopping, no parking zone, to restrict it now before they spend the money to put the window in, and there's problems.
What happens if they got to change their times to seven o'clock or eight o'clock in the morning to get their stuff? Then what do we do? That the alley is blocked with that at seven o'clock in the morning or eight o'clock, or whatever. Or whatever time is most inconvenient for everybody.
Then I have to go over there and I have to find the truck driver and I ask him to move so that I can get out, like I've had to do.
If we restrict parking there and stopping, then we're going to have to do it in all the alleys?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have to. I think that's an ordinance now. I think you just pointed it out, do you have that number? Was it one dash?
It said, which one are you asking about?
You said something about parking, restriction of the alleys.
Chapter eight, eight point zero six.
That was encumbered, the eight point zero six is that you should not encumber. Of all the, all the ordinances, that was the one that probably is least applicable.
Okay.
The language there really is.
Says they can't in any way obstruct or encumber any street, alley, sidewalk, et cetera.
Yeah, that'd be, the classic definition of that is putting a permanent structure there. Say the building was six inches across the lot line into the alley.
Okay.
So what do we do, send it back to me? Or just, like I said, table it and see what they want to do.
Table it, and why don't we table it? I will try and get down to her place Friday and talk to her. My work schedule isn't going to permit me to do anything until then, when my weekend starts. And I'll get down and personally talk to her and see if she knows where she's going with it, if she is or isn't going to it. And if nothing else, I'll have her ask for the hold off on it if she can until the next meeting and we'll.
Well, I don't think this is, this is not a do or die for her, if she don't put it down.
No, no.
It's not like she's going to shut, shut the place down.
No, they're not going to shut it down just because. See, to me, I got, it's a convenience, and she was here, and she gave her presentation. It's going to be a little bit of a convenience, because she said, so new, we don't know if it's going to take off. We don't know if it's going to, maybe it won't work at all. But it's going to be a little bit of a convenience for us to have that window. But it's going to be a huge inconvenience to them people, is how I look at it.
We don't know it's going to be.
Well, where the flip side is, that nobody's really mentioned yet, is what if, what if they're blocking the alley slightly, which, for loading or unloading, do you have any kind of a trailer? And a customer pulls up wanting to get their sandwich and they can't get in to get it? They're probably going to be a little upset, maybe beeping their horn at them, which they shouldn't have to put up with, that's kind of harassment. The customer might then pull into the parking lot and go into Subway all mad because they couldn't pull up and get their sandwich. So it kind of works both ways.
Subway can go belly up.
No, I know. We all have that.
We can't tell Subway, no, I don't think we can tell them, no.
That they can put the window in.
But we can't guarantee that we won't change anything.
Again, yeah, that's why I'm saying, I'm not, there's no.
Two weeks, a month, or three months.
I don't know, she walked out here thinking we were going to, we were giving any of our rights away. There is no giving of rights away, we've got the right to do as we.
We can say no to the request, as it says here, from Subway to allow customer pickups.
I mean, I'm just trying to open a resolution, I will look for everybody. I'm not seeing it. I don't see when that's going to work for both people, you know, it's just a matter, somebody's going to win, somebody's going to lose. And to be that one, well. Yeah, I'm sure, that's why, that's why I would like to just.
I'll make a motion that we.
We table it, table it, and we'll just tackle it again next month. I'll get hold of her and let her know it was tabled, so. And again, you know, if she said, well, I'm going to put the window in anyhow, I'll explain to her that it's at your own risk, because we're not really sure, the council's not sure either. Am I fair in saying that?
I agree with that.
Yeah, if I, if I go back to her Friday and tell her that this got tabled, and the council didn't, didn't agree to, basically, the only thing we were agreeing to was not restricting access to the alley. Period, that's the only thing on there that we were agreeing to.
At this time.
We did not, we are not agreeing to that by tabling this. Correct? So I will tell her that, that we are not, you know, if I, if everybody's okay with me saying that, I'll go back to her Friday, tell her that it's not going to, it's going to go back to committee, we'll be talking about it some more. And I, she doesn't seem that type of person, she's a very nice gal.
She is.
And I don't think there, you know, will be any huge deal about it, but if she said, well, we're going to put it in anyhow, I'm going to let her know that's at her own risk. That it hasn't been settled yet, that's something.
Yeah, and it's like I said, she could, we could put it in, they could bless it, we could bless it, and it might be the biggest flop you ever, you know, you might not get one person using the thing, you don't know.
Yeah.
It's at risk.
But I will make a point of trying to get down to her Friday, if everybody's okay with that, talk to her, and explain to her how it get tabled and going back.
I think we should explore the potential of these violating the ordinance, any ordinances, which she brought up.
The question is, do you want that opinion when you don't even have a, why I'd say, the request to let us do this?
At some point, we need it.
At some point, yeah, but.
Do you need a second on the floor?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, second then?
Second.
They're going to be tabling item one.
Correct.
Okay, the motion. There's a motion, a second on the floor to table item one, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Yeah, is that okay for now, folks?
Yes.
I won't stop to talk to her and, you know, it might go belly up there, you know.
Well, we appreciate you guys taking that some.
I hope you understand our position, we're just trying to find it, people for both sides.
It just seems like it's a bigger hit for us than it is, you know.
No, I understand.
But I appreciate you talking about it and.
Considering us.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Next is public safety.
Public safety at one meeting, make motion in seven minutes as written.
Motion, a second on the floor to approve the minutes of public safety meetings as written, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the overall mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, public safety meeting was held on Tuesday, January 6th, that should be 6th instead of 16th, 2015, 5:15 PM in Nacusa, South Chavers. Members President Terry Shemansky, Robert Wenzel, Garrett Coon, Ellen Peterson, Austin Attent, August Coon, Robert Schultz, Mayor Al Marco.
August Coon?
Rest in peace. My grandfather, by the way.
Excuse me.
My grandfather.
Caverly, Mike Harchi, Don Harmon, Sean Wentz, Dave Reinschmidt, Val Sheer, Jane Anderson. Number one, recommend markings north and south side of Prescott Lane between South Section and Maple, to be two-hour parking hours between 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM on school days. Number two, discuss four-way stop at Wood Avenue and South Section. Number three, discuss loan transfer money to the ambulance account. Number four, discuss EMT retirement party. Number five, recommend 74 Fireman to Wisconsin Firefighters Association Conference, March 6th to the 8th, three fellows and probably 15, per ordinance. Any questions?
Let's do one and five separate.
Okay, I'll recommend number five.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve item five of the public safety report, all rope up. Schultz?
Yeah.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Kripseth?
Yes.
And number one?
I've had a discussion with a couple on item one. I would like to see us either send us back for further discussion or make this no parking period instead of the two hour. It's no parking on the east side of the school, then we make it no parking on both sides of the north side of the school. This isn't really going to resolve the issue, I don't think, as far as the double parking that's going on there. And the goal is to get everybody into that south parking lot. I would like to see us go no parking period, be done with it.
You have two-hour parking on my side of the street right now, and it doesn't work. You've got people that are parking there for two and three and four hours. Some of them get tagged, some don't. You got people that park right in front of the pecking signs and.
And we do have a problem, we do have a problem, Jane, in the morning with the kids. And they're going back and forth, well, two-hour parking, they can still park there from 7:30 until 9:30, and the kids are still going to run across back and forth. If we eliminate that, get them down where they're supposed to park on the south side, I think that's the answer.
You won't have the problem with two-hour parking with the staff from the elementary school parking there, because they don't have time to run out during, during the day after two or three hours and move their cars.
Right.
But you do need to allow some space for parents, because that's the end of the building that has the pre-K or the 4K and the kindergarten and the, and the first grade. You need to allow some spot for the parents to pull up, park their car, take the kids into the building, and then come back to their cars. And that's, turning that into two-hour parking would allow for that to happen. Now, the staff gets there, parks their cars, and then the parents have to come in and double park. And that creates, that creates the problem, the traffic jams and so on.
Okay, that's the problem.
Yeah.
The staff is parking in there.
Right, that's, that's what we've been, any of us living in that area are arguing about.
That would eliminate them.
Right.
Can't the school talk to the staff and ask, no parking on the south side of the.
Public street, that don't work.
You say you have five people parking for longer than two and a half minutes.
Oh, hell, yeah.
But then no parking would be better.
Right.
I agree with, I agree with that.
But again, Jane brought a good idea, because how are they going to get the kids across the street? Where, I mean.
They're not, the parents aren't double parked then, because there's nobody parking there.
But if there's no parking.
Yeah, then they don't have.
Well, they're not going to park, and you can let the kids off. There's nothing saying you can't let the kids off.
Can you do less than two hours? How long does it take to pick up a kid?
You do half.
You do one-hour parking, 30-minute parking.
15 minutes.
Do 15-minute parking. Once you park there, but then, then you're going to have to enforce that.
Right, and that's why if we had the no parking, it's easy to enforce, it's done. And that was part of the discussion the other night, was they wanted to get everybody, including the parents, into that south parking lot. Well, this solves that problem.
I think it's more about getting staff there. Not the parents and the parents.
Well, that was part of the discussion.
I think you're going to have some parents disgusted that have to park all the way on that end of school to get their kindergarteners from the other end of the school.
That's going to create a problem, yeah.
Well, then they can park in the two-part, two-hour parking spot on the west, east side of Prescott Run across the street.
There is a west side of Prescott, Prescott runs east-west, so it's a north side and a south side.
Unless you put a sign up, say, saying like, student pickup only or something like that, you know, I understand that staff is the problem.
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, after the last meeting, after the meeting we were at on the 6th, I spoke to Lenny Engler the next morning, and he's, oh, he says he fought that for years.
Yeah, that's, that's a dead issue. I mean, them people are not going to park, not park them out, they won't do that. And I'm always the person that wants to side towards safety. You know, I will be the most safe as it can be when it comes to children, so.
I mean, we can, we can pretty much name them parking places, whatever we want, can't we?
You could, you could put it down, you were saying, pick up and drop off for students.
No parking, pick up and drop off for students only.
Right, yeah, right.
I thought they, if I read right, I thought the school district was going to build a new parking lot. They are, they're going to do, and that's where all their staff could go, like where the soccer field.
Again, they can suggest that, but they can't.
You can put.
Public parking, they, they're going to say, we're going to park here anyway. And they're, what can you do? There's nothing they can do, and that's what they're doing now.
I'd have no problem with no parking if we, if we put pickup and drop off of students, for media pickup and drop off of students only or something like that. That I'd be all right with.
Or just go with, go with 10-minute parking or 15-minute, however you want to do it. Or if you do it like with the student deal, then it's done and over with. You ain't picking up the kids, you better not park in there.
And I think once it gets the staff off of the road, that'll take care of the problem.
Oh, yeah, well.
You know, and that's what we're working for, to try to get the staff off.
Now, how restricted, if you put no parking, how restricted would you make it? Because that street is full when there's home football games, you wouldn't be doing the school days.
School hours.
That's always during school hours.
That's just like, across the street from Brad, I mean, it's only.
Yeah, that's packed during, packed during football games, or something.
Yeah, I've got no problem with them using it then.
Right. No, there are no, there are no school buses you gotta worry about.
But that's the biggest problem, then. Then you just put up a sign, you put on a sign wherever you wanted to read, you know.
Yes, I'm altering my sign. And you guys know I do it, too.
I know.
But, you know, I think the best way to restrict it, I, you know, no parking is another way, but, um, if you still want them to be able to pick their kids up there.
And 15 minutes. You want to send, take it back to committee and rework it next month?
I can, I can.
Yeah.
Is that okay, Jane? We'll take her back and, and, uh, and maybe, maybe with the word getting out, maybe some of the staff. I doubt it, but we'll, we'll, no, we will, we are gonna do it some, I mean, we're going to either go no parking or restrict it. The time limit there. So we're, we're definitely gonna take care of it, because we know there's a problem there.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Terry, you can tell.
We can get a sign built, yeah. If you guys decide what you want it to be worded, I can get a sign built same day. A quick sign as far as.
Don't you?
Yeah. We can build.
Yep, yeah, yep. So. Okay, you get a motion, a second, to send item one back to committee?
So moved.
Second. Motion, a second on the floor to approve, to send item one back to next month's public safety, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Jane.
Thanks.
Next is property recreation and human affairs. Bob's on here.
Brandon, go ahead.
Brandon, we turn? Going.
Property Recreation Human Affairs had one meeting this month, uh, on January 6th, moved with improvements presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve property recreation minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The honorable mayor and members of the Kuska County Council, property recreation and human affairs meeting was held on Tuesday, January 6th, 2015, at 5:30 PM in the Kuska Council Chambers. Members present were Robert Wenzel, Garrett Kuhn, August Wayack, and Emmett Peterson. Almost finished on the terms, where Mayor Al Marco, Robert Schultz, Phil Caverly, GPW, Dan Schmidt, Tim Olson, Brandon Jacoby, and Randy Soi- Soita. Item one, recommended request from Brandon Jacoby to extend community center closing hours to 12:30 AM. This would be a half-hour extension, bar must be closed at midnight. Item two, recommend proposal to change and modify Nacusa Community Center rental rates. Item three, recommend approval of promotional material for community center. Item four, discuss Nacusa Business Improvement Grant Program. Item five, discuss ice skating and warming house updates, and proceed with signage listing organizations that have made improvements possible. Item six, recommend non-renewal of Newmark Grub listing contract. Any questions? Move for adoption items one, two, three, and six.
Second. There's a motion, a second on the floor to approve items one, two, three, and six of the property recreation human affairs committee, roll up. Schultz?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Schramsky?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Krupseth?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Next is old business, anybody have anything else? New business, we got one thing that was discussed a little while ago. The water rate for the fire protection is going up with this coming billing. Bobby gave me a copy of the letter from the Public Service Commission. I'd like to have a recommendation to conclude this in, uh, a copy of this letter in the new, in the coming up bill.
So move.
Next. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, let's have Kurt go ahead and.
Look at where it's coming from.
Yep. Yeah, that I talked to you about. Anything else on your new business? Going into monthly reports, first is the police chief's monthly report.
Oh, second.
Motion and a second for the police chief's monthly report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is public works monthly report.
Oh, second.
Motion, a second for the public works report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the ambulance service monthly report.
So moved.
Second. Motion, a second for ambulance department, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is fire department's monthly report.
So moved.
Second. Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it looks like there's two for the building inspector.